We ready? Okay. Should we go ahead and go with Municipal Housing Agency? All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board Meeting, our last meeting of the year, December 23rd. I'm going to ask the clerk to take role, please.
County?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Our second item on the agenda is approving the conveyance of 304 East Deal Avenue, city-owned municipal housing agency property pursuant to the Affordable Home Ownership Program, Board Communication Number 13-602. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to the item on the conveyance of 304 East Deal? Seeing none, could we have a motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Last item is, could we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We sit adjourned. We will reconvene shortly in the City Council. Thank you. How are you? You missed the meeting.
The House meeting?
Yeah.
Are you done?
We're done.
Oh, yes.
We're all over. We know how to get this stuff done. Nothing to do. Do we have any Municipal Housing Agency stuff to do? Hey, Bill. You just sit over there and be very quiet. [Music] [Music]
Hallie, are you there?
I am, yep.
She's just trying to get him on the phone.
Hey, we're ready to push in.
Good evening. Want to welcome everybody to the Des Moines City Council Meeting, this one for December 23rd, our last one of the year for 2013. Prior to the start of this evening's City Council Meeting, we're going to have a quick word invocation. Carl Voss has asked Paul Turner, who is the lead organizer for AMIS, to provide us some words and invocations. So those who would like to participate with us would stand at this time.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the honor to be with you. When I was a freshman in high school, I was, I took a speech class, and my speech teacher said that I could talk about anything I wanted except for two things, politics and religion. And I said to my speech teacher, well, that's a problem because those are the only two things that I want to talk about. But I won't talk religion today. I want us to ask together that if we can lament together the low esteem in which the word politics is held in our country today, we should lament that as Americans because our system of government was inspired by, at least in part, the world's first democracy in Athens in Greece over 2,500 years ago. Athens and the Roman Republic were our guides for our founding fathers, and democracy became our North Star. But as we've learned, that North Star is not always fully realized. We wrote a magnificent document, our Constitution, but we left out slavery, and we had to fight a civil war to correct it. The women of our country wondered why they're not part of that franchise, and they fought to get in, and the franchise expands, and we get a little closer to that North Star. And the labor movement, and the civil rights movement, and on and on. Democracy is this episodic struggle, but it is our North Star. So we should lament the low regard of politics and public life because without them, that North Star gets further away. And I know your work in this chamber maybe doesn't always feel noble, or it's reaching for some distant ideal, but it is, and you are. So let me close by asking each of you, and maybe all of us together, to make a resolution in 2014. Let's forget about losing weight or going to the gym, because let's face it, we won't do that anyway. Instead, let's make our resolution that we will publicly promote and defend politics and public life and public service to everyone we meet in 2014. And if someone starts complaining to us about Congress, or government, or politics, we're just going to say, well, we understand, but if you don't like the way things are, maybe you should run for office, or better yet, organize and do something about it. And you can give them my number. Let's resolve to defend politics, public life, and government of the people, by the people, and for the people, and get a little closer to that North Star. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Paul. I will note, however, that for those of you that have seen our citizen survey, that it's not quite so true in local government, especially in Des Moines, where we have a very high citizen satisfaction. And I think that we will see that across the country, that those that serve in elected positions where their constituents can see them and talk to them and grab them, and whether it's in church, or in the grocery store, in City Hall, they feel a little closer to it. So I want to thank all of our citizens of the City of Des Moines for lending us your ideas and continuing to engage in our local politic to try to make Des Moines a better place, and quite frankly, make it the number-one place to raise a family, and the number-one place to have a business, and the number-one place for young professionals to have a career. So thank you, citizens of the City of Des Moines. I will begin this meeting by asking our clerk to take role, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Item 2 is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. I will quickly tell you that Item 23 on our agenda has been corrected, and it's authorizing the city manager to seek proposals for the purchase and redevelopment of the city-owned parcel in the vicinity of 420 Court Avenue with a mixed-use project. Item 36 was withdrawn, and we added an Item 42I having to do with the presentation of the franchise referendum, which is going to present some information and facts by our staff. Any rate, could we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented and, as I noted, the amendments? It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item 3 is approving the consent agenda items 3 through 42. These are items that are routine items and will be enacted by one roll call vote without any separate discussion unless a city council member or a member of the public asks an item to be pulled for further discussion or clarification. This evening, Councilmember Coleman votes no on Item 5. Councilmembers Moore and County vote no on Item 6. Councilmember Hensley wishes to speak on Item 23. And Item 30, Councilmember Mahaffey wishes to speak. Are there any other items that anyone would like to? Yes, sir.
I'd like to speak on Item 12.
Item 12. Okay. Any others?
Frank, I'd like to speak on 4A too, also.
4A?
4A.
All right.
4K, no, 4K.
Okay, 4K.
Liquor license.
Any others? All right. Could we have a motion for the balance? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Takes us to Item 4K. 4 is licenses and permits. It's approving alcoholic beverage license applications, and in this case for the following, which is Johnny Mac's Bar and Grill at 2279 Hubble Avenue. They are asking for a C liquor license. Mr. Mahaffey?
Thank you, Mayor. They have had a variety of calls on them by the police department. I got a, asked for a report. I think all the council got a copy of that. And I think we ought to delay this and propose to do something similar as we're doing on 5, having an agreement with the property owners. So I would like to continue this till next meeting and see if staff and legal can work on an agreement like we're working on the sports bar agreement on Item 5.
Any discussion? Anybody in the audience? We have a motion? Mr. Grease, Mr. Coleman?
Coleman, yes.
Seven yes?
All right. Takes us to Item 12. Item 12 was pulled by a member of the audience, which is approving the acquisition of 1712 8th Street through the donation from Half Moon Holdings, L.C., and releasing liens and special assessments. That item was continued from the December 9, 2013 meeting, Council Communication Number 13-617. Yes, sir. Give us your name and address.
Mike Hildebrand, 410 Franklin Avenue in Des Moines, and also the outgoing board president of the Riverbend Neighborhood Association. I'm here to comment on this. It's more to comment overall on the importance of the partnership of the city and the neighborhoods on problem properties like this. Also, a couple comments to let you know that you're not doing this alone, cleaning up these messes. As you probably are aware, the three properties to the south of this lot are owned by Riverbend Neighborhood Association. We are working, we will eventually be working to market those to a developer that will hopefully improve that area of the neighborhood. We also own the property to the north, which is a house, and I'm glad to report, I think we're close to getting a resident to take on that project to restore that house. Properties in this neighborhood, or in this area, go for about $6,000 or $7,000. It is not prime real estate in Des Moines. Having a price tag on this property in the $40,000 to $50,000 range probably will not appeal to too many developers. Also, we're looking to hopefully, if we could, work with the city on this property to bundle that with the other properties to eventually have a larger parcel. Right now, we have about a half acre with the properties we have. Adding this to that would take it up to 3/4 of an acre, and I think would be a lot more attractive. So it's very important that the city work with the neighborhood, as you have before in other neighborhoods, to make these properties marketable. They're not with the liens against them. I personally know that because I'm trying to acquire a property in the neighborhood that has liens not only by the city, but by banks of over $50,000. Taking on that cost upfront, your profit margin goes away, and the only satisfaction you get out of it is improving the neighborhood. And that's what I'm in it for. But others might not be into it. There's only a handful of people, probably outside of the neighborhood, that have interest in seeing this lot developed. So no matter how well Riverbend does on the lots to the south and the property to the north, with that lot in the center that's unmarketable with the liens against it, it will continue to be an overgrown property that I call on yearly for overgrown to the county and sidewalks to the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else anything to add? Given that, could we have a motion? Item 12. Move 12.
I couldn't hear, but I'll go ahead and move that motion if no one else is there.
Okay. Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
All right.
Seven yes?
All right. That takes us to Item 23, which is authorizing the city manager to seek proposals for the purchase and redevelopment of city-owned parcels in the vicinity of 420 Court Avenue with a mixed-use project. Mrs. Hensley?
I, we had discussion on this this morning, and fortunately, staff was able to come up with a resolution. So I'll ask Matt Anderson if he could review that for us.
Mayor, County members of the council, Matt Anderson, Assistant City Manager. For the benefit of the audience and for Mr. Coleman and Grease, I'll give a quick update of this. We had been approached, this is regarding a city-owned parcel, about 2.3 acres, south of Court Avenue between 4th Street and 5th Street. It's currently a combination of surface parking lots. And we have sought development, redevelopment of this lot for quite some time, and were approached by Opus Group from Minneapolis, who also has a Western Des Moines office regarding redevelopment. Worked with them for a number of weeks, and they were quite responsive, came up with a really, a really wonderful plan that we thought was worthy of council's consideration via the developer-initiated process. We discussed this morning, two ways to dispose of city land is via a developer-initiated proposal or an RFP. And we thought that with a responsive developer and a good plan, this was something that we should move forward with on a, on a developer-initiated proposal. Since that came to light on Thursday or Friday, when the agenda was posted, we had other developer interests, specifically Hubble Realty, and I'm sure there's going to be others now that we've started this, this dialogue. So taking nothing away from Opus at all, they've, they've got a good team and a good track record and, and good plan for the site, we do recommend, and that's what the revised roll call asked you to direct us to do, is to cast a wider net and take a poll of developers and see who's out there that might be interested in this site, and not ask them to go through a full-blown financial analysis, you know, heavy architecture. What we'd, what we'd like to do is, is spend 30 to 45 days working with interested developers to, and then we'll, and over the course of the next week, I'll put this together, kind of an outline of what we'd like them to submit, and then come forward with you, to you with what we think is the best developer, the best proposal for the site, without knowing a lot of the details at that point. We don't, won't have any renderings to show you by any means, but just understand who would be the, probably the most likely team to get us to the finish line with a great project. And so we'd like to kick off that process after the first of the year, and then hopefully bring a, a recommendation to you, picking from one of many developer teams, to begin, then begin a developer-initiated proposal with that team, and then at a later date, bring you even more specifics. So that's the revision here. Again, nothing against the Opus plan. I think it's a great plan, but I think we, we owe it to the site and to the community to seek out the best development possible, and that's what this would allow us to do.
So are you thinking, you said 30 to 45 days, realistically, you'd come back with a recommendation?
In February, yes.
Any other questions?
Real quick, Mayor, if I can?
Sure.
If I'm hard to hear, I can skip this.
You're okay.
Okay. We've gone through different RFPs in the past, and I think we're trying to find a balance between making it a, you know, a dog and pony show without much ability to get to the finish line and complete it. I've been through, I think, three or four RFPs on this block right here since I've been on the council, and it's still a parking lot. I, so I think we're getting close to a process that works. I just want to voice and make sure that the manager and Assistant City Manager, Anderson, build into the schedule a real definitive communication plan with the council through this process.
I will move Item 23, and appreciate the quick response to the issues, Grace.
Thank you.
Yes?
Please. Seven yes?
Item 30, naming of the Union Park Shelter houses is the bill, and Nellie Ritchie Shelter House and the Margaret Swanson Shelter House. Mr. Mahaffey?
Yes, I, this being on the consent agenda, I wanted to bring it to the public so they would all be aware that what we're doing at Union Park, these are people who worked diligently within the neighborhood movement. And I remember the first time I met Bill Ritchie, he was forming a group of people to plant 500 trees in the parks area, and he got a number of the churches all involved, and they got that plus. And, and Nellie was really, she served as secretary, I think, for the Union Park Neighborhood Association for almost a number of years, when she joined until she, she passed away. And of course, Margaret Swanson, she had been involved in a lot of the non-profits. She served on the boards for a lot of them, and was also instrumental in getting the Union Park Neighborhood Association up and going. And she, she had a lot to contribute throughout her lifetime, so to speak, at, to the City of Des Moines and to the Neighborhood Association. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the viewing public and the rest of the residents of the City of Des Moines, and I will move this.
Aye.
Coleman, yes.
Seven yes?
All right. That completes our consent agenda. Let's move to Item 42I, which is presentation of a franchise referendum, information and facts. A is to receive and file the acceptance by Mid-American Energy Company of Ordinance Number 15,00243, amending the electric energy franchise and the gas franchise to make textual clarifications. clarifications to the franchise fee. And B is receive and file acceptance of the Mid-American Energy Company of Ordinance Number 15,0244, amending the electric energy franchise and gas franchise to temporarily increase the franchise fee to be used solely towards the payment of the Cragness versus the City of Des Moines judgment. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. At the last council meeting, you voted on establishing the date for a franchise referendum of March 4th, and you might recall a presentation that staff made, Scott Sanders in particular, on some facts and figures and information about the upcoming vote. We have again tonight a response or information and facts as presented by Mr. Sanders, which provides additional perspective on this particular item, and with your permission, I'd like to have Scott Sanders come forward and present that information to you and the public.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Scott Sanders, Finance Director at the City. Okay. On March 4th, Des Moines citizens will vote whether or not to increase the franchise A recent court ruling has determined that the city of Des Moines must refund $40 million to gas and electric utility customers. The city does not have $40 million in our accounts, as the franchise fees previously collected have already been used to provide city services to the public, such as police and fire services. There are two revenue options available to the city. The city council has the authority to raise property taxes. An increase of the franchise fees requires a vote of the people. There are distinct differences between these two options. The impact on homeowners and businesses will differ depending on which option prevails. Homeowners and businesses pay property taxes, and that represents 60% of the property in Des Moines. 40% of property owners do not pay property taxes, such as nonprofits and tax exempts. All properties that have gas and electricity pay franchise fees. This includes homeowners, businesses, as well as the nonprofits and tax exempts. Therefore, the cost is shared among more people with a franchise fee increase compared to a property tax increase. For the franchise fee option, the average homeowner would pay $273. For the property tax option, the average homeowner would pay $444. So again, March 4th, the, the Des Moines voters will decide whether or not to increase the franchise fee.
Anybody have any questions? Christine?
Two, two comments, and maybe potentially action items to refer back to City Legal and City Manager. Understanding the significance of this on the city and all of the residents, I think it's important that we look here, right at the city council table, and come out publicly with a recommendation that we would choose not to accept a refund, but not having, had the chance to look at language and how that would be appropriate. I guess my first action would be that we refer that to City Legal to have them come back with specific language that would allow us to, I know that we have that option.
Allow us to, City Councilmembers?
As City Councilmembers, correct. That would be item number one. Item number two, having listened to the discussion and all of the debate that we've had, and I believe all of us have received a number of emails from citizens that are saying, "We really don't want this. We would like to give it to the city to be used for specific programs or services." I would really like to have the city manager and legal explore those options and tell us what would be likely, what would be possible areas that could be the recipient of those dollars, whether it's parks, libraries, streets, and I believe based upon the presentation we had this morning with the citizen survey, that there were some real significant connections that could be made, that we could come up with some recommendations as to if citizens did not want it and they wanted to gift it through a proper 501(c)(3) that could be used for services within different departments of the city. I'd like to know if that's possible, and how we would go about doing that, and how we could incorporate that into what's being discussed as we're trying to get the information out, because I think now would be the time to have that decision. So those would be the two items I'd like to refer to City Manager and Legal.
All right, Mr. Moore.
Since I've already given one presentation of a neighborhood on this, and I see some of the suggestions were followed, I think that on this costly average homeowner, we need to have a notation on there, how many years? That question will be asked.
That was the comment I had.
Good point.
Can I, can I build off of that?
Sure.
I think Councilman Moore raises an important issue. In reflecting back on the presentation two weeks ago at council, we talked about seven years for the franchise fee, and that's restricted by law if it was passed, and that we talked about the sell and the payback of the bonds, that if, if they were stretched, it, it could be, you know, X number of cents on the levy through property tax. I think it is important that we take a clear message to the citizens, and we should talk about what that tax rate cost is in the same period of time as the franchise fee, and I'd like to refer that position to the, to the attorney and manager.
And maybe, and maybe also to City Finance to just walk through that, that whole thought process.
Yeah, do you understand what I'm saying? I think it'll be clear if we're telling the citizens an apples-to-apples comparison, and, and quite frankly, I'm not playing games here, when you compare apples to apples, the impact on a family in the city of Des Moines is much more significant, I think. The tax increase that's required is almost double if we tried to pay it off in the same seven years as the other. And I think that we should talk about that, because that is an option in front of the council, and it gives a clear choice to the citizens that will be voting on this.
All right, we'll refer that also to have the manager put it out to appropriate departments to analyze the impact on that and get us back some exact numbers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Hallie?
That's what I'm going to do, sir.
All right.
I'll move to receive and file the information and refer as requested by councilmembers.
Hi.
Hi.
Seven, yes?
All right, takes to item 43, which is amending Chapter 26 of the Municipal Code regarding operation of steam boilers, engineers, and the licensing of power engineers and firemen. Council Communication Number 13-606. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion, please?
Move.
It's been moved.
Hi.
Hi.
Seven, yes?
Item 44, amending Chapter 7 of the Municipal Code regarding hunting permit application fees. Council Communication Number 13-628. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to this, amending the hunting permit application fee?
I'll move 44.
Item's been moved. Council, any discussion? Seeing none?
Hi.
Hi.
Seven, yes?
Item 45, amending Chapter 74 of the Municipal Code regarding park and recreation fees. Council Communication Number 13-619. A is the final consideration of the ordinance above, the waivers requested by the Park and Recreation Department, and this item requires six votes. Is there anybody here to speak to the amendment of Chapter 74 regarding park and recreation fees?
I'm in favor of 45, Mayor, but I am leery of taking final action on this. There's a number of small nonprofit organizations that are affected by this, and I know that over the holidays, you know, it's been, it's hard to get them to focus and get their boards together to prepare for this. I, I, I think it is a reasonable fee that we're establishing, but I'm, I'm not sure every nonprofit soccer association, football league has come to grips with exactly what the budget is going to be and how much they're going to have to raise fees.
Okay, so you'd like this to be the first vote?
I, I would. I mean, I also realize I'm one vote, but I'd move 45, but I'm not going to move A.
All right, we have motion to move 45 without A. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
All right.
Maybe at the first meeting in January, we could do the second and third reading if we don't get.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi.
Seven, yes?
Hallie, you won't get to vote on that.
Sorry.
So did the break.
Yeah, that's what happens. Let's move to item 52, which is approving items regarding the principal riverwalk. A is approving the completion and acceptance of the 2012 Riverwalk improvements, subject to the receipt of documentation. B is approving completion and acceptance of the Des Moines Recreational River and Green Belt Project, Des Moines Riverwalk Phase 1, and C, the designation and naming of the principal riverwalk and multi-use recreational trail and dedication of parkland along the Des Moines River. Is there anyone here to speak on item 52, A, B, or C?
Seeing none, I'll move item 52, A, B, and C.
I think as this project ends, I'm supportive, I vote yes. I think as this project ends, I would recommend that the, the mayor, on behalf of the council, send a formal communication of principle thanking them for this tremendous improvement. It's been with a lot of fanfare headaches and a lot to be proud of over the last decade as we've worked on this.
All right.
Agreed.
Vote in progress.
Hi.
Seven, yes?
All right, let's open our hearings at 5 o'clock. Item 46, on the conveyance by installment contract of 1704 South Union Street to Neighborhood Development Corporation, NDC, for $145,560. Council Communication Number 13-611. Is there anyone here to speak to item 46? Okay, step up. Is there anybody else? Is our only speaker? All right, give us your name and address, please.
Yes, Abby Gilroy with Neighborhood Development Corporation, 3209 Ingersoll. Just wanted to give you a brief update on where we are with this acquisition, how this piece fits into the overall. It's kind of dark too, I apologize, but this hatch property here, this is a little over an acre that the city owns in this assemblage. We have the remaining portions of this four-acre lot under contract, so as you can see, this portion of the assemblage is quite important to what we're trying to do here. So we have our development happening across the street, just to the west. That's the Madison Flats development that we're doing, but we've put together this, this four-acre assemblage that we are, it is on the market to sell to another developer at this time, so that is the plan. Any questions or concerns about?
Anybody have any questions of Abby? Don't say any, thank you. Thanks for clarifying that for us. Anybody else? Can we have a motion?
I'm, go ahead.
So move?
46.
Mr. Coleman, Mr. Grease?
Yeah, yeah, you're fine. Seven, yes?
Item 47, so on the conveyance of vacated segments of the north-south alley, north of Cleveland Avenue and south of Washington Avenue, between East 18th Street and DeWolfe Street, to Crane Chapelle Church of God in Christ, $200, and to Joshua Smith, $75. Council Communication Number 13-616. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to this? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Seeing none, I'll move, I am 47.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Boss?
Seven, yes?
Item 48, on the correction of the vacation and conveyance of a dead-end segment of Southwest 11th Street, south of Kirkwood Avenue to Des Moines Independent Community School District for $1. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anyone in the audience to talk about this vacation conveyance of this dead-end segment of Southwest 11th?
I'll move 48, A and B.
Hi.
Seven, yes?
Item 49, on the vacation conveyance of a segment of East 26th Street, right-of-way adjoining 2597 Dean Avenue, to Johnson Brothers of Iowa Inc., $625. Council Communication Number 13-614. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, the waiver is requested by the applicant, and again, requires six votes. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this vacation and conveyance of a segment of East 26th Street, right-of-way? Anyone? Seeing no one, could we have a motion? 49.
I'll move 49, and 49, A and B.
All right.
Hi.
Been moved?
Hi.
Seven, yes?
Item 50, on the application of Lofredo Gardens, Inc., to rezone 4001 Southwest 63rd Street from Planned Business Park to M1 Light Industrial. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to this?
I'll move item 50, A and B.
Item 50, A and B has been moved.
Hi.
Hi.
Seven, yes?
Item 51, on a license agreement with AT&amp;T Corporation upon property located in and adjacent to vacated Mulberry Street between 13th and 16th Street for $5,000. Council Communication Number 13-612. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to this item?
I'll move 51.
51 has been moved.
Hi.
Yes.
Seven, yes?
All right, let's note that the hearings end at 5:06. That takes us now to 53. Item 53 is Recommendation Regarding Budgeting for Repairs of the Meredith Multi-Use Recreation Trail Southwest 1st Street Bridge and the Meredith Multi-Use Recreational Trail Southwest 5th and Jackson Street Bridge. Council Communication Number 13-618. Is there anyone here to discuss this item? Yeah, all right.
I see lots of interested parties out there.
Season's greetings, Mayor and Council. Jack Porter, 815 18th Street, Des Moines. I really wish the council would move the agenda along a little faster. Okay, fine. Thank you. I'm here to speak in behalf of saving Jackson Street Bridge. I know that it's, all these financial decisions are tough to come by, but this particular bridge has great significance, and I'm hoping, based on the reading here, that you will include it and make it active as part of your recreation trail system. These bridges, we're seeing them lost throughout the state, almost on a daily basis, it seems like at times. And it's very unfortunate, because it's not just about historic buildings, but it's also about historic structures. Engineering... Engineering, fabrication, craftsmen of putting these historic bridges deserve as much our attention as saving a historic building. And so I'm hoping the council will consider whatever financial means available to you to preserve this and restore it and make it usable. Just letting it sit there isn't doing anybody any good. And it is a wonderful structure, and it can be repaired, and it can be used often into the future. So just asking your support and your favor to preserve Jackson Street Bridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack, thanks for coming down. Mr. Manager, could you quickly give us a, maybe a one-minute idea of what, what you are going to undertake to try to see if we can accomplish what Mr. Porter here is recommending?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Our recommendation to the council on this evening's agenda is to allocate $750,000 of city funds towards the restoration of the project, assuming the balance of the restoration costs can be raised from non-city sources. The estimate that we have, it's a preliminary estimate at this point, is that the cost of restoration will be about 3.7 million. So that leaves about $3 million that has to be raised from other sources. But our recommendation to you is that we set aside $750,000 in our capital budget to do that. Just a little bit of background, trying to stay within the mayor's one-minute time limit. Earlier this year, the city had hired a structural engineer, Chuck Briston. They are a well-known firm that does bridge evaluation. This firm looked at the bridge and said that it's a wonderful old bridge, no question about that, but it has some structural defects that simply have to be addressed. Those of you who are familiar with it know that the bridge has been blocked off at either end because it's simply unsafe to use, and that presents a situation that the council simply has to deal with. We can't have the public going across a bridge that's unsafe. This particular recommendation is a path forward, however, that allows the bridge to be saved if the other funds can be raised. There's other details, but essentially, that's the long and short of it. In the capital budget that we're recommending to you or will recommend to you, in just a few short weeks from now, we'll include this recommendation for $750,000. Those funds would be available, and there is ample time to do a fundraising. I'm suggesting 18 months from the point in time when we know for sure when the, or what the restoration cost is going to be. That should be maybe later this spring sometime. And that should be, that should be sufficient time for that fundraising to occur. So hopefully this works, and hopefully the desires that Mr. Porter just expressed, and I know that many people are interested in saving the bridge, hopefully that can happen under this particular path forward.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hensley?
I guess just back to the comments you made about the 3.7 million, Rick. There's all, that is if we completely restore the bridge, but there was also another number that was, I think, about 1.7 million, which made it appropriate and would open it back up for foot, pedestrian traffic. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct, Mrs. Hensley. But just to be clear about it, our recommendation to you is that the effort right now ought to be towards restoration of the bridge. It's a, it's a historically significant structure. So our thought is that we ought to try to do the fundraising around that historic preservation. If, if, if the funds aren't raised sufficient to allow that to happen, the council could certainly entertain other options if you so desire at that point in time.
I had the opportunity to be at the Parks and Recreation Executive Committee, and I thought that there was just excellent discussion as to coming up with the recommendations here and moving forward. It's a good game plan, and I'm very confident that we'll be able to get to that 3.7. And, and I'm very excited about having the opportunity to work with individuals, because I agree, it is a bridge that is well worth saving, and maybe this can be used as a template for others throughout the region. So I'd be happy to move item 53 if nobody else wants to speak.
I do.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, this is just barely outside of Ward 4, but it's, for eight years, this has been on my morning running route. And with my running partner, Julie Hale, and I, I think over eight years, I've run across the bridge roughly 1,500 times. So I'm, I am pretty passionate about this bridge and, and how this enhances the trail network in downtown Des Moines. So in addition to voting on this proposal, I will pledge to you that I will contribute to the effort to raise funds, and I will help bring other people to the party, so.
Carl, if we can save the bridge, I'll put it on my running route.
Which is not very long.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion, Mr. Manager. In all of good holiday cheer, I didn't ding you. You ran over a minute, I want you to know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that latitude.
All right, item 54 is authorizing city manager to initiate actions for the Iowa Department of Natural Resources funding for environmental cleanup and building removal relating to the fire damaged warehouse at 1422 Scott Avenue. And that was a big fire. Anybody in the audience with any questions or statements regarding that warehouse? Seeing none, could we have a motion? That's one that needs to get done.
Yes.
Aye, and I'll also vote aye on 53. I don't know.
We had you down as an aye, sir. Thank you very much.
Seven, yes?
Item 55, urban renewal development agreement with the Principal Life Insurance Company for renovation of its corporate offices at 607th Street, 801 Grand Avenue, and 711 High Street in approving the proposed conceptual plan, Council Communication Number 13-605. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Last item on the agenda, but I think this is of such significance within the city of Des Moines that I would just like to acknowledge Principal Financial Group and their investment to the city of Des Moines. I know Councilmember Coleman talked about Principal Riverwalk, so it's great that you've got two really very, very significant investments by such a great corporate citizen as Principal Financial Group. And this is significant. So thank you very much for that support and investment in the city. I'll move item 55.
Good point, Christine. The two of them combined are darn near a half a billion dollars.
Correct, yep.
Wow.
You got to vote for it. Okay, all right. Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Seven, yes?
Mr. Reese, do you have a motion?
I will move to adjourn.
All right, Mr. Reese moves to adjourn. That's his final motion as a city council member. Thank you, Hallie, for your service to the city of Des Moines. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We said adjourned. Happy holidays to everybody. We'll see you in 2014. Thank you.
Thanks for a good year, staff, mayor, council.